Now I'm talking quick and fast.
We'll call me to order with real call.
Frank, here.
Here.
Schulte.
Here.
Greg Carter.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council will receive information on non-agenda topics brought before the council by members of the public. The council will not discuss these topics and will not take action on any of them at this meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this on the agenda? We will go to consent agenda. One motion approves all consent items. We have one for the evenings to approve minutes for the meeting held on August eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Motion by Gargano.
Second.
Seconded by Fry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. General Benson, we have four items. Item one is received twenty twenty-one financial and tax incremental district audit, financial statements and supplementary information presented by Baker Tilly, by the man Cam.
At least you were brave enough to say it.
That's right.
Thanks for having me. I'm Cameron Sawyer. I see a lot of familiar faces here with Baker Tilly here to present the twenty twenty-one financial statements and communication to those charging governance. I have Jacob sharing currently just a four-page kind of general summary and it'll go over some of the control items. And that'll open up to any questions that you may have. So this first document, let's see. This breaks down your general fund results for twenty twenty-one. As you can see, the overall position only went up a slight amount by twenty-five thousand one eighty-six. And if you scroll slightly down, Jacob, you'll see. You'll see also that the unassigned fund balance, which won't, the figure won't be listed, went off about one point three million, which is directly corresponding to the decrease in non-spendable fund balance. TIFF six was able to pay back a substantial amount of money that was owed from the general fund at the time that it had deficit cash. When that happens, that increases the amount of money the general fund has on hand to spend for all the projects. Consequently, if, you know, in the future, if a newer TIFF district does engage in projects, you could anticipate to see that non-spendable balance go up. Currently, the city is in a position where most of the TIFFs are either paying back anything that's owned to the general fund or have a very small balance. TIFF nine is the exception that is kind of ramping up and getting going. As you can see in the summarized income statement, if you want more information about what makes up the difference between budget and actual, you can look at the full financial statement document, page of sixty-four through sixty-seven. As you can see, it was a positive in both cases. You, you had maybe a positive in the revenue side, but also more in expenditures than initially budgeted for. And that's almost entirely made up of the FEMA money that the city received, both from a revenue perspective, was finally approved to be dispersed and project costs being incurred. So if you would look at the pages sixty-four to sixty-seven, which are not included in this document, you'd see large orders in those two areas. Overall, the rest of the budget, both from a revenue and expense perspective, was consistent to what was expected. The general fund doesn't have any restricted fund balance. That would be a fund balance that has external restrictions. So there's nothing currently out there that the general fund is being restricted from an, from an external standpoint. If you want to go to the next page. This graph is gonna, can you, is it, can you scroll up just a little bit? Perfect. In, in most cases, this looks great, where the, you'll see the unrestricted fund balance, which is the assigned fund balance and unassigned val- fund balance combined together. You'll see that that balance increased from forty-five point six percent last year to sixty-four point five percent. Those blue dots on the screen represent the, the reference for the median for a municipality that's your size, as well as what your policy is to stay in between twenty-five and thirty percent. So that is, the, the city is doing quite well. From a, a ratings perspective, they do like this number to stay relatively consistent or planned. With ARPA and all the other kind of uncontrollable factors here, this number was anticipated to have kind of go up and down a little bit over the course of the next two years. But it does give you some flexibility to take on, you know, projects that are kind of going on. Go to the next page. So this summary will kind of outline what your overall debt position is. Currently, the, the city is at sixty-seven percent of their debt capacity. And that is the legal debt capacity, which is limited by the state of Wisconsin. Of the twenty-four million dollars that are factored into that thirteen million is, is actually held by the utility. So while your debt capacity is high, the utility does have another debt source called revenue bonds that are not considered in the debt capacity. So there are certainly, you know, that is higher than it actually, you know, could be if it was refunded. If we go to the last page. This is another graph that's going to look a little funky. If you take out what was refunded this year, the, the city to save money on interest refunded quite a few state trust fund loans. They refunded about two, about two point one million dollars in debt. So if that number is taken out of that, that current year percentage of the twenty-three point seven is actually closer to eight percent. Where your actual true principal cost this year was seven hundred and forty thousand instead of the two point nine. So that's a little bit of an irregularity for this year due to the refunding, but it is consistent. And that, that value is, you know, your debt service compared to non-capital expenditures. Any questions on the four pages before I go over any of the other documents?
Any questions for Cam?
Alright. So you're not going to have the other documents on your screen, but we do issue another document outside of the financial statements called the reporting and insights. This document is available either via PDF. You should have gotten that with your packets, but there are hard copies here as well that I brought with me today. This outlines any control deficiencies that we're required to communicate. I'm happy to announce there weren't any new control issues this year, as well as the city does take the findings that we have in here, such as aggravation of duties and, you know, the ability to prepare the financial statements seriously. So why we do have to report it, because it doesn't make the gold standard of going away. The city has taken steps to kind of put supplemental procedures in to prevent the worst kind of things from happening. And I will mention, because I do like pointing out progress every year. So this year, there was a total of four mistake, or four material journal entries that we were required to communicate. I think five years ago, that number was closer to sixty. So I really appreciate Jacob and, and his team for taking the audit seriously, learning every year and taking steps forward. It definitely is shown in all the work that they put in. The last document, I won't go over in specific, but it's just the financial statements. This is about the eighty-page document. Basically, what we get paid to do is this page one through three, and it's the financial audit opinion. Just communicating that we did have unmodified opinion, which is the highest qual- or the highest level of opinion that we could issue to a municipality. So there was no concerns in our audit that was worth noting. Any other questions?
Any questions?
Alright, and in the communication to governance, there is my email address as well as Amanda's email address. If you do have any questions after the meeting, we are certainly available to answer those at that time.
Alright, thanks a million, Cam.
Thank you.
I just appreciate all you do. Alright, number two is approved and I authorizing the construction of the Reesburg Fieldhouse project to go to public bid. Tim.
Okay, so I'll start it off. So with this project, as you know, we've taken some considerable criticism about not having public meetings. So now it's at a meeting that it probably doesn't need to be at. We could have just sent this out for bid. We just wanted to let you guys know and communicate with you that our plans are ninety-five percent ready. Alright. It was ninety percent earlier too. So ninety-five percent ready and we are prepared to go to bid on the sixth of September. So I guess, understanding that not a lot has changed. You have the plans in your packet and I'm sure you've noticed that not a ton has changed. The most recent addition was the GeoTech report that we got and it was like exactly what we had expected with that, with that parcel. So I guess, if you guys have any specific questions, Dave Cameron from ABCI is here. He's our project architect. He's here to answer questions if you have them. I don't know if you have any specific questions at all or.
Dave, how you doing tonight?
Good, and you?
Good, good to see you.
You too.
Excited to get this project underway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize for having like the, you know, the overinformation to you guys, but I wanted to make sure that, that you all weren't criticized for not reviewing this closely enough, so.
I guess the only, I talked to him about this was to make sure that what can be bid publicly is on the website.
It will be.
Yeah, it's all, it's all going to be online.
Yep, yeah.
Yep.
I saw a couple contractors local that have called about wanting to bid it, so.
Yep.
Perfect. That'll be available on the sixth then.
September sixth is the plan.
Yes, sir. Yes, we're gonna put it out for bid the same day that we're submitting it to the state. So those will track aside and aside.
Perfect. Questions, comments? Anything you want to add, Dave?
No.
I know it's been a work in progress.
It has been. It's been a fun project. A lot of moving parts coming together late in the game, but we're getting there.
Should you feel bad that we pulled Dave away from his eighty-hour week to come here to?
To sit down, relax for a minute?
Back for a second shift.
Yeah.
So the plan is to, everything works out as far as we're looking for for bids to break ground in October?
Yeah, typically a project of that scale will be out for bid for four weeks.
Yep.
Bids will come in and then we've got about two to three weeks in the schedule there for you guys to review contracts. The contractor will have to pull his contracts together, submit them to you with his, with their insurance certificates and all the paperwork. And then at that point, you guys will do a formal review of the contracts and then they should be ready to go. So.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Pretty good.
Alright.
You don't have to go back. You can go home if you want, Dave.
I don't think you can.
No. It's that thing though, isn't it?
It is.
Thank you for all you do with diligence and this and it's been quite the, the project to figure out. I'm glad that everything's come together.
Yeah, it is.
Appreciate your team's efforts.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from council or take a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Stevenson.
Second.
Seconded by Kane. Anything further? All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tim, for all your, I think you've been playing phone tag a lot in meetings, lots of times. We appreciate your efforts too.
Thanks.
Number three is approved and I memorandum of understanding with Huntington Park LLC for construction of building three of the Huntington Park apartment complex in TID nine. Tim.
So here we are finally, building three. So building three is going to be a lot like building one. In the, in the original developer's agreement, Luke Peltin, the, the developer, was willing to build, build building three if the market would support it. A lot of things have changed since two thousand and nineteen when we signed that agreement with him. The market will support it. It's just that the construction costs have gone up dramatically since then. So in order for us to make this deal a reality, we had to make some changes to get building three up. And building three will be forty-eight, forty-eight units. And the, the breakdown of the units are on page two, section I, number one. A mix of two bedroom, two bath, single bedrooms and then studios. Very similar to what I think building two is, as far as that goes. And he understands that he's over capacity, I think, or over density by, I think, three apartments. So he'll have to come back to the plant commission to get this up. That part of it taken care of, but he has sufficient enough parking for all of that. And we don't expect a huge issue at, at plan, I don't imagine, so. So what happened with the, with the deal to make this a reality is that we had to go back into the original developer's agreement and amend that for building one. So building one was a paygo of twenty-five percent of the, of the property tax back to him for seventeen years. We amended that to ten years. And because the buildings are now currently assessed at a value much greater than what we had anticipated. We originally anticipated at three point five million, they're coming in at four point six right now. And we anticipate that it will be, you know, a little bit higher than that. So the deal is very similar. Building three is similar to building one now. Where building one will be a ten-year paygo, so we'll save seven years of paygo on that. Building two, if you remember, is, is also a ten-year paygo, that's at fifty percent. And now building three would be a ten-year paygo at twenty-five percent. The total net from this project into the TID surplus would be eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. So it's actually minus five hundred thousand, because he's requesting a five hundred thousand dollar upfront payment to start building number three. And that's what he's, he's foregoing the, the seven years on building one to get the five hundred thousand dollars on building three and then going from fifty percent down to twenty-five percent for building three in order to make all that kind of work. Totally all that math up, it comes to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars at, at the current rate. So he's getting a twenty-five thousand dollar break on that. But that doesn't take into consideration the longevity of that and the change in value. So again, we're still benefiting from building two by two hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Now there is one other, I guess, part to this is that his part in that piece, which I think he just doesn't like those fees. So we negotiated that into this particular deal. So we'll use the money that will be obtained from closing TID's three, five and seven for that housing extension will be, he'll pay those upfront and then we'll reimburse him with that money later on after he pulls his, his building permits for this, this project. So I know that was a lot of line, so.
Time to remember that, Tim.
You know, he would want to break the ground in October. But he does need to go to plan first to make sure. So I guess I'll take any questions.
Questions, comments? Pretty quiet.
I'm, I'm sorry, I know there was a lot.
If not, I'll take the motion to approve.
I guess I'd like to thank Tim for the work in getting this going and getting building three in our sights. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve the MOU.
Motion by Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Gargano. Anything further? All favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, number four is approved and I memorandum of understanding with Lynn Properties LLC for construction of a multi-tenant building at the intersection of Kate Street and South Auburn Avenue in TID eight. Tim.
Okay, this also took a little bit of time to put together, but you know, TID eight, the finisher period expires in two thousand twenty-three. So, and we had talked about the projected surplus of three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars that'll be in that TID. If you don't use that for another project, you eventually just have to give that money back to the different taxing jurisdictions. So it's in the city's best interest to apply that to a project to get that project going. I met with Richard Lynn of Lynn Properties. He had developed the Arby's on the east side here and he also does a lot of development in Portage in the Pineary Road area. Took him for a ride around town, showed him, showed him the site and he was very interested in the idea of doing this. So we wrote up a, a deal. So he will build a seventy-eight hundred square foot multi-tenant commercial building. He thinks there'll be four spots in there roughly twelve hundred, thirteen hundred, whatever that, that math comes out to be per unit. He has a, he's a fairly big operation, so he has a marketing department that's already on to this and everything. So they have prospective renters already lined up. He'll build that, he'll get that built, he'll start this year and he'll get it built before the end of next year. He wants to build fast, but he can't make any guarantees of a shorter timeline than that based on how he's having trouble getting things. So he doesn't want to put himself in a box there. But the building they have built, he's guaranteeing the value at one million, forty thousand dollars, which means, based on the current bill rate, they have a tax on it twenty-one thousand, one ninety. So we've guaranteed, so what the city's responsibilities would be is to return to him a one-time paygo payment of twenty-one thousand, one ninety, just once. And then we would purchase that lot that he wants to build this on and then we sell that to him for a dollar. And the value on that lot is, well, not the value, but the price that we agreed to on that lot is three hundred thousand dollars. And we have an accepted offer at that price for that lot. So I think I got everything. I can give you like a rough idea of who he has as far as potential tenants would be. Like a professional public, a restaurant and a service type industry. Sorry, it's as tight as I can be, I'm sorry. Yeah. So I guess, I guess with that, I'll take any questions. Again, it's, it's one of these deals that we had to kind of hustle to get this done because the expiration of the TID is next year.
Any questions for Tim? I don't know, you've done your due diligence with this as well to make it a reality. So I appreciate your efforts again with this. I'll take a motion, one's in order.
To make a motion to approve the MOU with Lynn Properties.
Motion by Gargano.
Second.
Seconded by Schulte. Anything further? All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Again, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Recommendations from boards, committees and commissions. We have two items, one for the plant commissions, approved and ayes, first reading and set public hearing for September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two for ordinance nine, one nine four four dash two two, the twenty forty-two comprehensive plan, adopting the twenty-year comprehensive plan for the city of Reesburg. Tim.
Okay, so Brian isn't here tonight, so all I need to do is introduce this and he told me not to screw it up. So, so this is the, the comprehensive plan, twenty forty-two comprehensive plan that the plant commission has been working on for at least a year.
Yep.
It's coming to fruition. It's a, it is what it is, a comprehensive plan. It details all of the, all perspective planning for the city for the next twenty years. What we're, all we're looking to do right now is to provide a, a public hearing for September twenty-sixth. I think FOTH, the agency that we had do this with us, will be there to present as well if there are any detailed questions about the plan itself. But other than that, I guess I just need to get the public hearing.
Any questions for Tim? Good job, by the way. It's all pretty thorough.
It's, I'll let you, it's, yeah. Any members of plant, if there's anything to offer, I guess.
Well, you, I think you summed up pretty well.
Yes.
I'll take a motion.
You have it, Your Honor. Move to approve.
Motion by Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Kane. To set public hearing for September twenty-sixth. All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is from the Parks Committee, approved and I counteroffer to purchase approximately fifteen plus or minus acres of parcel two seven six dash two two zero one dash zero 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 in the Webb Park Popple Trail area. Tim.
Okay, thank you, Mary. So this was brought to you, brought back to park, no, brought to parks, brought to you, brought back to parks and now back to you. It's a request from Gavin Fundway to purchase a portion of that, that property. We reviewed the, the offer that he brought back to us and we have a series of conditions for the counter that I guess if you guys are okay with, you can counter back with them. Can you bring up that counter? And then maybe Derek, if you want to go through those for us?
You bet. Well, you, you saw that I had a twenty-five page lease agreement, so I, I kept it down to one.
Wow.
Yeah. Exhibit A is really the substance. Yeah. Exhibit A is really the substance there. There's an attachment on that. I, I could just say that the, uh, purchase price is one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars an acre. And there's going to be a CSM to be completed and we just want to make sure that the CSM is going to cover the agreed upon areas that we've been talking about. Um, that is to be completed within a time certain. I added an additional timeframe that says that it needs to be completed on or before a certain date, and if not, we would have the ability to declare the offer null and void. The property is being purchased as is, that's line ninety eight, one hundred. Um, line two eighty two, essentially what this is saying throughout the document is that the cost associated with all of this process will be that of the buyer other than us creating the deed and the transfer return. So normally in some transactions seller is responsible for certain things. Um, in this instance, shifting the burden back over to the, the buyer, um, yeah, I just restate that again at the bottom, six fifty four through six six four. I think that's the primary, uh, distinction. A lot of it's, uh, kind of just clarification of language.
Questions? Discussion, how about somebody from Parks?
So, uh, Galen Fenwick was at the last meeting and so this is basically a return to the initial offer. Um, but just a little bit change in the property from the ditch, meaning the, the doiter than instead of down the middle. It's, you know, his goal is to get through the hurdles that the county had previously with the sale of the act, the campy landlocked. And, um, so the parks was fine with it for that description. If he can get the county to agree and to get the ac, the easement access and I said I'm, I'm sure that the council would be willing to listen. So that's where we're at. Um, it was a short discussion. I mean, the park committee was fine with it, so.
Okay. The, the biggest holdup is going to be that CSM and getting that, uh, that access to the property, which I guess is going to be on Galen, not us.
Questions, discussion? Or motion of ones in order?
What's the, what's the likeliness of getting it approved by the county?
Brian says zero.
That's my, that's my.
But you'll need, unless, unless, I don't know if you get an easement or something like that down that road or somehow get some type of public access down that road.
And that's why I added the language at, uh, line thirty six. Uh, the current offer says closing, I think, ninety days, and I just want to know that at some point we can declare that it's, it's not happening. And, uh, and obviously he's in the process and the county's still reviewing it. I would anticipate you're going to be flexible, but outside of that, we'll have a ability to say it just didn't happen.
Would it also close thirty days upon disapproval?
Uh, yes, uh, after Saw County. Yep. So it's going to close within thirty days after Saw County approves it or one hundred and twenty two days from the date of acceptance. So one hundred and twenty two is our furthest point in time. This, if it, if it fails, it's, uh, that's a contingency that's within this and it's not going to work.
Cause I don't, I personally don't think they're going to make the exception. Never seen it before.
Yeah. Um, you know, the Parks Committee, we're not land purchase experts, so, um, he has some tasks to do and, um, I guess if it works, we were comfortable with passing it on and approving it. And if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So I guess with, with that, I'd make a motion to approve the counter offer as highlighted by Derek.
Motion by Peterson? I'll second that. Seconded by Kane. Anything further?
Just a clarification, your honor. We're approving
Counter offer.
Counter offer as we're proposing.
Yes.
Correct.
That's the only one.
Yeah. Anything further? Have a motion second. All favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll mail it over to you, Galen.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commission, committee, board, staff reports, Parks and Rec.
Uh, so we had the land discussion. Uh, Matt gave us updates on the parks and we had good discussion for the unfortunate need to do some kind of fortification of our bathrooms in the future. Whether that's a friends group or fiber run, automatic locks or whatever. Nothing. We'll, we're, we're going to try to figure that out. Um, we met down at the splash pad, which is awesome. And then we had a discussion on a, a really fantastic consideration for an expansion at Web Park, which would be an ADA inclusive new set of playgrounds. So it'd be the splash pad, the traditional playground and then the inclusive ADA stuff, so, um, Tim has done some magic with some of his benevolent donors. And we will probably be looking for some web fund to, to do some matching, but it's a, it's a great, great, great thing for our city.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
You're one of the first longer round here, man. You're one of the first hard rock in the world.
Yep, no, it was good.
Much needed, for sure.
Yeah, and, uh, we just had some minor discussions about the future with budgets and things and as, as the theater property comes into the parks world and the old public works comes into the parks world, you know, we may have to bump up another seasonal as things progress because just mowing and maintenance and that kind of thing, so. But that won't be for at least a year.
It was a good meeting.
Great meeting.
Uh, R A C D C.
Did that meet?
Public Works.
We did meet, uh, mostly for project updates. K Street Going West is all but completed. Uh, just a couple of finishing touches left on that, but it's, it's open and good. Um, Laurel's, Laurel? At the end of September, we'll push back a little bit, um, but still anticipating being done by the end of September. Um, work continues on the, um, sewage plant. Steve and the staff down there have been doing, experimenting with different filters and, uh, doing some, some, uh, trips, tours to other facilities to see design. So there, that continues. And then fall coming close, so.
Will be long as leaves will be falling.
Be falling.
Everybody loves that time of the year down there, Steve.
More trees and cut down.
Uh, Utility Commission.
Utility Commission met for the regular meeting on the fifteenth of August. Uh, the electric crew has constructed underground service to the neck lip lumber apartment complex that's being constructed on the west side. Uh, we continue to install wildlife protection on the recently converted twelve K V system. Uh, this higher voltage isn't as forgiving to squirrels as the old system was, so, uh, we may see fewer squirrels in town as a result. They're not getting a second chance. So if you do get a blink, we are not having power outages in town. These are just a simple blink because of the squirrels doing what squirrels do. Like I say, we're trying to
offset some of that with, uh,
with wildlife protection, but
Wildlife protection.
That we, there's more squirrels than our employees at the utilities, so it's taking a little longer, so. Uh, fiber construction is progressing in Bear Creek, Excelsior and Fairfield Townships. We continue to turn up new customers in the Bear Creek area. Best news, we too received a, uh, presentation from Baker Tilly. Gave us a clean opinion. The utility is in a strong financial position.
Good news. Excellent.
Excellent news.
Alright, the plant commission. Uh, we talked about a, uh, home business on Desterain uh, and approved that conditional use permit. Also, uh, five new storage buildings on Wendell Drive, um, considered, or we approved the, uh, site plan review for that. Um, and set the public hearing. Want to make sure we got the, so the council has set public hearing for the um, comprehensive plan. And talked about signs a little bit, so. Pretty good meeting there as well. Library Board, you got good stuff, don't you?
Yes, we always have stuff. We got, we got volumes.
You better watch it because the boss lady's back there.
I know.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's the only reason she's here is just to listen to me, right? Uh, our numbers continue to increase. You know, we're, we're getting more and more people through the door. It's looking like the old days. It's great. Uh, we also, uh, uh, approved the, the preliminary budget for next year. We're asking the city for a little bit more money, just a little bit, Tim, just a little more. So, uh, we're, uh, working on that. Uh, another project that we're, to end is just starting on is doing some reorganization in the staff workroom. Uh, there's, you know, because of recent changes in staffing over the years and, uh, the various needs we have for the workspace, we're kind of looking at, at reconfiguring that a little bit. Uh, that's a work in progress right now. And, uh, so we're, that's, that's ongoing. You know, anytime that, that you want to see what's going on at the library, come in and, and you can take a look at that workroom and understand why we need to do some reconfiguration back there because it is a small state, space for the number of people that are in there, so. Um, we still have not received the final numbers from Sata County. Expect that to be very soon. Um, but other than that, everything is going well.
Very good. Did you alright, sir?
He did alright. He forgot to say we had sharks and they were amazing.
There were sharks. There were sharks and they were at the Lions Building. The Lions Building. Did I mention that the Lions Building?
Stories of lions and we have sharks.
It might be the first time there's been sharks in the Lions.
Oh, alright on that. We'll see if anything happens to zoning board. And the CVA.
Uh, CVA met. We approved funding for three home games, which is going to open, uh, September first by next to, or across the corner pub. Uh, and we got a status update for Headstones and Booms and it seems like she's doing very well.
Awesome. Good stuff there. Any other committee, commission or staff member, member, anyone to report tonight? Uh, off to the mayor. Um, I think the biggest thing I want to touch on this evening is to make sure everyone remembers that school starts next week. Kids are going to be excited to be back, I'm sure. They all will be. Uh, just make sure while you're holding the bulk drive in, especially before school and after, do, uh, watch out for those kiddos darting out across the way, Jacob. That's weird. Um, that's all I got, I think, for tonight. I can think of right off the top of my head. Tom Stevenson.
Nothing tonight.
Dave Knutson.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, your honor.
Phil Peterson.
Nothing tonight.
Missing friends?
Nothing, thank you.
Adam Kane?
Nothing tonight.
Derek Corkin?
I'd like to yield my time to Jacob.
Oh. Well, I don't have anything. But, uh, no, I did forget to mention when Cameron was here, this is going to be his last meeting with Baker Tilly. He's leaving and going to be the finance director for Cottage Grove. Um, so I meant to thank him publicly, but he's been a great help over the past four years for all of us.
He's awesome.
Um, so excited to continue to interact with him through our professional associations, but, um, we'll see who we get at Baker Tilly, so.
Absolutely. And that goes, I did think about one thing before I move on. I want to thank everyone that showed up to the groundbreaking for the new hotel, Holly Express. It was a very strong showing. There had been at least, what, ten, thirty, forty people there?
I think there was seventy.
Seventy people. A lot came come on people over there. The drone footage.
You're busy. Yeah, you're very busy.
That was a very, uh, a very, um, well attended groundbreaking for a very, uh, this important, uh, expansion for our city, so. Uh, look for great things in that business party after that. Gets going as well. There's some excitement with the people that were there, even about, uh, the future for that, so. Tim Becker?
Uh, nothing for me, sir.
Mike Gargano?
I've got a public service announcement, mayor.
You got it.
Yep. Well, last time you chastised me for not having anything to say.
Yeah.
So I figured I'd make a public service.
You got PSA for it?
There's seventy seven days until the midterm elections. Get your vaccinations because otherwise you're going to go crazy for all the stuff we're going to be swamped with in the next seventy seven days.
Put your phone on silent. Thank you for that PSA. Jason Schulte?
Nothing tonight.
Congratulations on September first. That'll be a fun adventure.
Thank you.
Craig Broschway?
Um, the historical side, he's hosting the Heritage Day rendezvous this Friday through Sunday from ten till five daily and the cost is eight dollars.
Should we back off there too? Perfect weather.
Hopefully.
Derek Frack?
Nothing, your honor.
Nothing? Alright, with that, I'm going to read this. We're going to go in the call session. The common council consider moving into call session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section one nine point eight five sub one sub B for the purposes of considering the dismissal, demotion, leave, licensing or discipline of a city of Reeseburg employee or contractor. Take a motion going to call session?
So moved.
Motion by Peterson, seconded by Gargano. All favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Take a couple minutes. Thanks, everybody.
Is the twenty year plan pretty good?